The study session of the independent school district five thirty-five school board is called in order five thirty on Tuesday, May the twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen, ten thirty-seven of the Edisonville. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent Schools, and a non-voting executive official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Schussner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Let's turn to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two point zero one approval of agenda, Mr. Munoz. Will there be any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven point zero one approval of the two thousand nine, teen, twenty twenty school district budget, information line, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, before I turn it over for John to kind of walk us through the budget book and then take questions after that, I want to thank everybody at the table because even though this does come out of the finance department, but I think we had over ten versions that the cabinet worked on since January. I know Heather's department also had a lot to do with the actual building of the book. So it was truly a team effort and like I said, John's going to walk us through it and then we'll take any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to go through this. I kind of think of this as the Super Bowl for finance department. We've worked all year. We're getting to the big game here. We're going through the budget book and then I'm going to take Friday off and enjoy. But before we get to that, let's walk through this. I don't care if you ask questions as we go. I don't need to feel bad if you interrupt. So we'll start at the inside cover of the budget highlights. Just wanted to give a few things about the budget book and what's contained within. First off, in the general fund budget where we're going to spend the majority of our time talking about because it's our biggest fund, it's where we have the most flexibility. It is a structurally balanced budget, which means that revenues and expenditures are roughly equal. So we're projected or proposing to spend basically the amount of money that's coming in within our budget. The fund balance will comply with school board policy. So when we finish the current school year that we're in, we finish the next school year that's upcoming, we will exceed school board policy right where we want to be. Spending overall is going to increase three point four percent and that's going to match again increase in expected revenue about three point four percent. When we made this budget, obviously we've been working on this for many months, we assumed a two percent general education aid formula increase. That was not finally decided upon until Saturday. So we had to prepare this under that assumption this whole time, crossing our fingers and hoping that that's what would happen and it did happen. So that statement underneath there was this legislative session adjourned on May twentieth. It did indeed adjourn with no funding law signed at that point, but then it was approved on Saturday.
Before you go on, John, I do want to state that we have a lot of union contracts that we have to notify staff that they're going to be employed next year, which doesn't match very well with when the budget is finally given to us. So I think a lot of the contracts, it's around April, we have to identify, let them know if they'll have a position next year. So you kind of hope you're on target as far as what you project and in this case, we landed where we thought we were going to be.
And there's other revenues that we found out in the funding bill that aren't in this book and I'll highlight those as we get to certain spots that some things happened that we weren't expecting. So there'll be additional that we weren't coming in. Class sizes, we have staffed. We've gone through an extensive staffing process. We monitor this continuously at cabinet meetings, but all of our sections right now are at or below target. And as we see any creep up, we have put contingency teachers within the budget that are there for us to use. The superintendent gives us approval for that and then we roll out another section as needed. Half of those sections are kind of dedicated to special ed half to general ed, but if it comes out to be seven and three or eight and two, that's no big deal. Enhancements, so some things that we've included in here that were new, there's going to be nine elementary school counselors added. So for the first time since I've worked here, we'll have at least a halftime or greater school counselor to every elementary school. We're adding five social workers within this budget, three student resiliency specialists, the middle school right fit program, an incubator DDU program for our high school students, and then we've added some technovator stipends and we'll talk about those in a little bit. Any questions there? All right. We'll turn the page. There's a picture of you in case you forgot what you look like and what your name is. We'll flip forward to page six, a letter from the superintendent. Again, just some very quick comments on here. The superintendent points out, we have to every year reallocate funds usually from one area to another to meet the pressing need of the day. And this budget, again, there was a focus on mental health because that's what we heard from our students as we went around to our buildings and listened to them. They wanted more mental health services available and to accommodate that, we had to make adjustments in other areas. So when we get to talking about maybe FTEs, that will kind of show through those adjustments from here. On page seven, on the letter that I put together there for you, just wanted to point out some of the things like our bond rating and goodies and standards import aren't very high. So we have a good rating, which would be important as we head towards a referendum, potentially passing a district debt. That means that we'll probably get really good interest rates when we do that. And again, it seems like we live in a time of uncertainty and that was very evident over the last month as our state leaders took rank to the last minute to come to a budget agreement. And so that just kind of weighs on me as we're trying to put together this massive budget and not really sure whether revenue will be there that we need to provide the services that our students need. All right. Page eight. This is a budget timeline. So as I said earlier, this started a long time ago. We started July sixteenth when MDE opened their website for us to put in data about the upcoming school year because that's data that they needed for the fall levy cycle, which is what funds us in next school year. So you saw that back in September, made a final decision on October second. We talked at a truth and taxation hearing in December and you approved the tax levy. So that was really your first approval at setting the budget for the upcoming year. Then we get into a little more heavy duty budgeting in January, February, March. That's when we're rolling out allocations to our principals, telling them what kind of a budget they have to work with. And then we add into our staffing meetings, we're actually going through building by building, job by job, and determining which staff positions we're going to have and which ones we're going to have.
If I may, John. Sure. So what tends to happen, certainly what occurs in February and March is true and in April is when the board begins to receive emails from employees that are being impacted. And we may not oftentimes know what is going on. Is it possible that when decisions are being made or when you're pretty sure that adjustments and or changes, be they programmatic and or personnel, would it be possible for the board to know in advance or as the notifications are going out, could we also be perhaps notified so when we do get the onslaught of emails, we'll know what's going on ourselves?
Are you asking for like the specific names of the people or like these programs are being reduced by two point two FTEs?
Well, if I may, because I sometimes hear from other board members myself, what do you think would be a good way? What would you like or prefer or want, need?
I was thinking more like your ladder of mine where it's like if you go into a building and you're reducing a program by whatever, just the heads up, you know, names, no, we don't need that stuff. But just general thoughts and guidance.
Because you have two sets of those. You have some that may be a district decision and then buildings have title funding and compensatory funding that maybe I funded position A this year on a compensatory and I decided based on my needs in my building, I'm eliminating built position A and adding position C. So you have two kinds. You have, for example, one that we made as a district to pay for the additional mental health, we made some reductions as a system, but there are, you know, for example, somebody asked a question about minority lays on or yeah, minority lay. Well, that was a site decision that decided, I'm not going to use my compensatory to fund that next year like I did this year. I'm going to use it to fund, to reduce class sizes or whatever. I mean, those are decisions that the site make that may impact one individual, not a group. So we have two kinds.
Were there any other board desires?
So this that you sent us, which was great, the staffing allocations, and it has a date of January fifteenth. So is that your starting piece that you then go and do all of your visits with?
Yep. So we, the staffing allocation document, we worked on that probably November, December, finalized it by early January so we could give plenty of heads up communication to our principals about what to expect when they started coming in for their staffing meetings in February.
Okay. Because it seems like some of the priorities that you had set for staffing were reflected in this document and there was some pretty good description. For example, the library media specialist is sort of where the source of that reduction came from and then what you were thinking about with the counselors, et cetera. So I don't know if this is something that can be shared with the board so that we know where you're going and then we get the final, how it's all worked out when we get the budget. Just so we're, you know.
Seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, I mean, I, this is a little tweaks than what we used the same thing the previous year, but I think we tweaked it a little bit for next year. So that would address district decisions, but it's probably mid to late March. Here's the way it works. They get this so they know what their allocation is and then they get their, here's how much compensatory money you have, here's how much title money you have. They decide how they want to use that. So the first meeting, we go over that probably around in February and early March and then they come in the second time where we actually start talking people. And that's when they may say, well, I'm going to not replace, I'm not going to use my minority lays on next year. I'm going to use that funding to do this instead. So that's, this year it was right before spring break, I think, when we had that second meeting with staff. So it's not until then that we really know when the death settles that. But the district ones, and it's kind of hard to say too, because in some cases, we may have reduced in one area, but they, a building used their stat, their compensatory to pay, you know, to keep that position at that level or to even add on. For example, we had one of our elementary goes, I think we made a deduct, there was a reduction somewhere, but they use their money to even maintain it at this year's level and then even make it more. But that was a decision that was made a little bit probably at the end of the second meeting we had with site. So I think we tried to have the first meeting, have principals not have conversations with staff about the changes they're making until it's finalized at the second meeting and that's when.
Like March?
Yeah. Late March, I think we tried to do it before spring break is when the like Friday before spring break so they can have that conversation one-on-one with the staff that's position has been reduced or eliminated. And then that starts the whole, here's the openings now, here's, you know, you have an option for all of that, so.
When do staff need to know that they've been displaced? Is there contractual?
Technically, we could still reduce, we could tell the staff they're not renewing it up until the end of June, but we try for everybody's sake and fairness to the staff number impact to let them know by spring break. So if they need to seek other employment, they have an opportunity to do so. So we try to have that meeting with them, the principal meeting with that individual that we're looking for.
So I guess that communication we have with the board would be, here's district changes we made. Building A reduced here, added here. Building B did this, their buildings, you know, all 25 schools will make some changes, which they're trying to address the needs of their building and what worked for the two previous years, maybe they want to change next year. So I guess for clarification, the district ones, yeah, we can be pretty solid on that, but the individual building ones, it would be not until literally after that second meeting when we're actually talking people and positions.
Yeah, I think all we want really is the ability to communicate in a positive manner to be it employees and or members of the community when they are raising issues or bringing to our attention things that we haven't yet been made aware of. And I think what you're proposing is a good workaround for us.
So just for clarity's sake, you want us to communicate just our district like, for example, like the media specialist, that was a district wide, not building A didn't do this position because they did this position? Or do you want all of that?
Because that ends up in here, all those individual allocations.
I understand that.
Right.
But you're asking for communication way before you get this book.
Right.
You're asking, you're asking for communication when the people get it.
Or would you be like, I'm hearing, I think, when the staffing allocation, the main roadmap or guide to the district allocation is ready?
Right.
And if there's any changes?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And in this document that you got, for me, anything in red is something that changed. It may have been an increase, it may have been a decrease. So I tried to highlight for principals, anyone reading it, what's changing.
That was great.
So, so we're talking district type?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask or add something? I mean, for me, it was helpful getting back to the media specialist to see that it wasn't like there was a media specialist that is now not in a particular building, but how you kind of sliced away at them. And that's in the doc, somewhere in something that I read today. I don't remember where it was. As opposed to getting emails or phone calls about, oh, you're cutting media, you're cutting all the media people, what's going on? And, you know, this kind of thing, I think to emphasize what Kathy said would be really helpful. Not that we have to have all the nitty gritty details, but just to kind of bring it, bring it down a little bit, you know, or if the public sees, well, you're adding all these mental health counselors and all these different positions and oh my gosh, how can, how can you do that? Because I think it was in response to Kathy's questions where you had all of those little pieces outlined and that was, that was really helpful. But I'm assuming you know about it sooner than today.
Correct. Okay, thanks. All right, we're up to page nine then. So then the second half of the budget timeline is stuff that happens from today and it takes us all the way through the end of 2020 before we really close out the budget on the 2019, 2020 school year. So there's just a series of steps there that do with budget revisions a couple times before the board and then a lot of auditing and reporting and publishing data. On page 10, RPS history, a lot of the words here are the same as what we've used from the last couple of budget books. So maybe just draw your attention down to the bottom on the enrollment history and the enrollment projection. So we've come from seventeen thousand, one hundred and forty-four students in the fourteen, fifteen school year, up over one thousand students to the eighteen, nineteen school year. And as we, I think conservatively project forward, the next five years, it'll probably be another thousand students over that time. And then I really liked how marketing did the sheet, RPS by the numbers. I think it turned out really quick visual, easy to kind of see a quick snapshot. I think we're going to use this document and other publications to, but just kind of show, we've got eighteen thousand students out of a population of a hundred and thirty-five thousand approximately within our school district boundary, which again is larger than the city of Rochester itself. We are the seventh largest school district in Minnesota. We have geographic range of two hundred and eighteen square miles. Some of our demographics, we have over eighty languages that are spoken in the district. Ten percent of our students are in DL. Thirty-seven percent of our students receive free reduced price lunches and seventeen percent of our students are special ed. Under the staff column there, I think we rounded to the nearest thousand, but on any given payday, we pay about thirty-two hundred people. And so that might be a coach who's just receiving a stipend for coaching the golf team to a sub who covered one day in an elementary class to the superintendent to everyone else that's full time. So about thirty-two hundred paychecks get produced every payday.
So you're talking bodies?
Bodies.
Not FTEs?
Yep, thirty-two hundred bodies. Seven thousand volunteers were recorded serving this year in our records, providing about twenty-three thousand hours of service. Sixty-three percent of our teachers have a master's degree or higher. All right. Any questions on by the numbers? We've wanted to put in a little bit of information on twelve and thirteen about the referendum since you've already approved that. We know that that's happening in the next school year. So this is just a factual informational piece that's going to be circulating around, but we wanted for historical purposes, include it in the budget book. So I know we'll get more attention on that later, so maybe not going to spend too much time on that. Page 14. This one deals with our local property tax share. And just for your information, if you haven't seen it on our website, we recorded about a two-minute video on how property taxes work, very high level, but to try to just give a flavor of how property taxes work in general, kind of trying to describe what you see in writing here on this page. But I'll just point out that near the bottom there in the second paragraph in the bottom, our total property tax levies, the amount of property taxes that our local citizens are paying directly into Homestead County for our behalf is fifty-six million dollars. And that's, so that's money they paid their first half property taxes a couple of weeks ago, they paid their second half in October, and then the county sends that money to us for use in the nineteen, twenty school year. The chart below kind of just tracks historically, what has the taxpayer been paying if they had a $200,000 home? You see it starts there at $614, ten years ago. It's at $721 this year. It was on an incline and then it started declining. That doesn't mean we're generating less revenue for the district, just means that the tax base or the amount of properties businesses paying in, there's more of them. So the burden on any one given person is coming down just a little bit. So if both questions of the referendum passed, that's $721, you'd add ninety-six to that and that'd be eight seventeen. So if you kind of look at historically on the graph there, that's about 10 bucks a year higher than what people were paying in 2017.
Would it be reasonable to expect that part come down with a decrease in the last year?
Correct.
So it would be worse, still worse?
Correct. That's usually how it is, is that we're pricing on the first year impact and then from there, it usually gets a little bit better if the tax base keeps growing in the next year.
I don't know if this is the right time, but what did or didn't happen at the legislature regarding our referendum authority?
I believe there was some more operating referendum equalization. So that should drive down our local share on the operating referendum just a little bit. It's not going to have a huge impact in our district, but it should bring it down just a little bit. I haven't seen a run yet on what that's going to mean.
But that authority for the school board to renew a referendum did not pass.
I'm not sure about that policy. I got you.
I think when it was under consideration too, it was not, it was for future referendum, not passed on.
Passed, but it had already been approved.
That's the way I wrote it too.
All right. Any questions on property taxes? Then on page 15, this is just a quick snapshot. The district manages about 10 funds that we, you know, think of a fund as like a bucket of money. And so the general fund is seventy-five percent of the spending that we do. The internal service fund is our self-insured health, dental, work comp funds. But the general fund again is what we're spending most of our time talking about. All of these total up to three hundred and seven point three million dollars. And this is the original budget, so usually as we roll in unspent money from the previous year, we have bonds that we didn't finish all of our construction by June third year, we'll come to you in the fall and do a budget revision. So the three oh seven, it's kind of like our starting point. It's kind of the new money that's going to be spent and then anything beyond that is usually money that was left unspent from our budget. Page 16, this is just again, the listing of the different funds that the district needs to segregate its money into. I will point out the HRA trust fund in the bottom right-hand corner. This is a new fund that we have to start tracking. The district is the trustee now of the section one fifteen trust. That's our health reimbursing accounts for our employees. So we're holding that money until employee submits the property paperwork to Optum, which is a third-party administrator. They pay the employee and they're opting the money on a weekly basis. So it's more money in, money out for the employees benefit. We can't touch that money because we've given it to the employees and we're just holding it now until this funded. We will have a new fund and another new fund in FY twenty that's not included in here. We're going to have to, we're going to have to convert our student activities to board control. And so we're going to be showing you then all of the money that the students fundraise and spend on their class activities, prom, things like that, things that weren't within the budget before that have been just managed separately in each school. Those now have to come under board control from the government accounting standards board, decided that and then now new sort of state laws and they're coming to compliance with that. So I'll be bringing forward a resolution to you, we'll have a new fund, we'll be tracking it, talking to you about it on a regular basis. On page 17, can you look at this graph of where does the revenue come from? I looked at last year's budget book and all the percentages are exactly the same. So everything's kind of gone up in the same proportion. State aid is still going to be seventy-six percent of our revenue, federal three percent, property taxes nineteen percent. All right. On page 18, what we're trying to just draw your attention to here is that of the general fund, the two hundred and thirty-two million dollars that's spent, sixty-five percent of it is spent on student instruction. So that's our teachers, our parents, people in the classroom in front of our students. That would make sense since we're a school district, we should be spending most of our money on teaching and educating our students. The forty million is our extra supports that we give, like busing the students to and from school. That's where our guidance and counseling services go, our health services, media services, social work services, those are included under instructional and pupil support. And then admin, we point that out just to draw attention that we feel like that's a reasonable amount. It's not growing exponentially fast, but it's keeping up a little bit there with inflation. Okay. Page 19, tried to, I don't know if I did three years of comparison last year, I think I only did two, but this year I, why not just retain seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen? You can kind of just see the trend of what's happening in these different programmatic areas. So I don't want to go through line So I don't want to go through line by line, but just draw your attention again, student instruction in the blue. People support is the kind of pink color there. Sites and buildings, support, admin, and then debt at the bottom. And again, these are comparing original budget to original budget. So it's our starting board-approved budget to board-approved, board-approved. So I'm trying to just take the same snapshot in time for you. All right, on page twenty. These are the objects of expenditure. So I added up salaries and benefits, it's going to be eighty-two-point-two percent of our starting budget. Last year was eighty-three-point-one. So we're generally always north of eighty percent, and that's very common when we look at other school districts. I'll point out under purchase services, the twenty-nine million dollars there. Thirteen of it is spent on school bus contracts, you know, driving kids to and from school, and for students, kids on the go, et cetera, and our utility services. So more than half of contracted purchase services goes to driving kids to school and heating, cooling. Our, just putting the lights on. Any questions on that? All right, on page twenty-one. If you take our general fund budget of two-hundred-and-thirty-two million and divide it by eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen projected students, means we'll spend about twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars per student in general education dollars next year. That compares to twelve-thousand-three-seventy-six last year. If you do a percentage increase there, that's thirty-point-four percent. Two percent of that is due to the increase in state aid. So that's really the difference between twelve-three-seventy-six and twelve-six-twenty-one. The additional one-point-four percent of our, excuse me, that's one-point-four percent. The additional two percent is because of the formula increase. The one-point-four is because that's how many new students we're expecting. So let me say that again, one-point-four percent new students. So we're projecting to grow by another couple hundred students. So that's one-point-four percent of the increase. And then the state aid going up two percent is the other two percent of the increase. So that's how we get to a three-point-four percent.
I, I think it's really, really important to make that distinction so that people say, oh, you've got a three-point-four increase in, in your budget next year, and not really sorting out that one-point-four percent of that is just because we have more kids.
One-point-four is because we have more kids, two-point-o is because we've got a state aid gap. So there's no other new revenue identified that's coming in above and beyond to help with the situation.
John, is that, is this a standard look when we might look at how much other, compare with how much other districts spend per student? Is that a pretty typical way to?
Yes, we could do that, we could benchmark that.
Well, I'm just thinking if other, if other districts did the same thing, they would be doing, using the same formula generally?
Definitely. They, they, you know, unless they probably had something like a new voter-approved operating referendum coming into play, their budget's adding to go up about two percent plus then any amount for any new students. If they're declining, it's obviously going to be less than that two percent increase in that problem.
So would that have looked different the year after the referendum?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there would have been a bump up. It would have been, you know, the amount of state aid, plus the amount of new referendum, plus our new students. We probably would have had, I want to say closer to a double-digit percentage kind of increase. All right, down below, elementary class sizes. So this is a big deal again to us, our K to six sections. We watch this every week, every other week. So the school board target is there, and there was a question today, I think, about who, when do we bring this forward? These numbers have been set since twenty-ten, when the school board needed to make a decision to increase them at that time to do a budget reduction. So we haven't manipulated them or adjusted them since that time. And then we show how many students are enrolled as of May fourteenth, when we're looking at it last. How many teachers we budgeted at that grade level. If you divide that, it gives you kind of what the average class size is. So, you know, a particular concern would maybe only be sixth grade that we're kind of pushing right up. Like that might be the, one of the areas in addition might be needed. Now, it's more likely we'll need some kindergarten sections because we're budgeted for thirteen-hundred-and-forty-seven kindergartens, but only eleven-twenty-two have actually registered at this point. So I could see us maybe hiring a couple more kindergarten teachers in the summer. But our sixth-grade students, unless they're moving in or transferring in, the number's probably pretty close to being after instead at this point.
And if we have to add kindergarten sections, they're going to come out of that ten FTE buffer?
Correct, exactly.
And is there actually space for them?
Well, that's the other question. We were talking about that, I think, at one of our schools today, and you said, well, is there another room? Or is something going to be displaced? Is it going to be, you know, hard in the hallway? Those are the kinds of questions we start asking now at this time.
I, I think we should think about having it from the buildings maybe?
That would be very helpful. All right, page twenty-two. How many staff do you have? Now, these are in FTEs, so full-time equivalents, not the number of people necessarily. And so you can see there's an increase in teachers. That's primarily again because the social workers and the school counselors are teachers, so they're licensed in that group. So there's an increase there, and in our paragroup will have an increase. Beyond that, there's not a lot of adjustments in our FTEs. There's some little changes here and there that we can talk about when we get maybe back in our FTE section.
I'll talk about it later, the FTE section later. A question about this document. Is this a document that is, this is a draft and it's going to go out to the public later? Or is this just an internal use book?
No, this is public. Multiple years it's on the website.
But is this a draft of it, or is this how it's going to go?
Unless you, the board doesn't approve it and makes changes, then, then it'd have to be changed before we...
Well, one of my concerns is that those kinds of documents, I mean, they're hard enough for us to understand who have learned a little bit about what works, but of course, the public. And in our referendum year, this kind of thing is going to be more under scrutiny. And, um, scrutiny, and I was worried about the administrator line. It looks like we're doubling, almost doubling our administrators.
Yes, I have a great explanation for that when we get back there if you want.
Right, which I got in the questions, which is great. But what I'm worried about is if this document goes out to the public without that exception on this page. I mean, it's going to, it's going to be the amazing person who makes it all the way back to page one-hundred-and-nine and, and digesting that information.
Yeah, I think we'll do, just like we did for the operating referendum on our website, we'll create a question and answer that, things that come up like that will pop in as, here's a question, here's the answer to that question.
That's great. I'm just thinking, if this book were still under edit provisions, that maybe an asterisk could be put at the end of this page because the bite-sized information for the public. I'm just really concerned that something like this could get blown out of proportion.
Okay, I will take that suggestion, thank you.
It seems like this is easy adjustment.
Well, and, and I'm just trying to look ahead with an outside eye, knowing what the anti-operating people generally try to follow on to.
Okay, yes, I think a note maybe directing back to page thirty-four would be pretty good. Thanks. On page twenty-three, this is what I wanted to highlight. This is a new graph that we hadn't put in here before. We didn't actually make this graph. We got this through the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, who posted it publicly for our use. But it just is a graph that shows back to school year two thousand and three, when the legislature took over the majority of funding for public schools in Minnesota. The rate, the general education rate back then is four-thousand-nine-sixty-six. If you follow the red line, and that would be what the state aid formula should be now if it had kept up with the consumer price index. Now, we can argue if CPI is the best way or, you know, or not, but it's kind of understandable that prices go up, still costs go up, and so on. The green line shows what the state has actually done. And so there were a couple of years in there where they held it flat, where they gave zero increase. So it kind of, the gap really widened, and then it's been really trying to catch up over the last couple of years when they've been making decisions on state budgets. So right now, that gap is six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. And if you multiply that out by our nineteen-thousand people units, we are, our budget is about eleven million dollars less right now than what it would be had they kept up and matched the consumer price index all these years. So we would, instead of a two-hundred-and-thirty-two-million-dollar budget, we'd be talking about a two-hundred-and-forty-three-million-dollar budget. And so you can imagine, that's a lot of positions, a lot of extra staff that we don't have right now because it hasn't kept up.
Maybe this is in a previous one that I didn't go back to look at. But what is the percentage of state funding that we get from the general education aid?
Total state sources altogether are seventy-six percent. I'm not sure exactly off the top of my head how much, but this, the basic funding formula would be the majority of that seventy-six.
It's, it's over fifty percent of, of, of seventy-six percent?
Yep. All right. Then to page twenty-four. A couple of the charts that we're going to talk about here in the next couple of pages are new this year. A couple of them are the exact same as what we had in the past. But, you know, one of the things I've heard in the past is, oh, you spend too much on activities and athletics. So we use our software called Forecast Five. We go out, we run a benchmark and try to say, is that reasonable? Are we spending too much on athletics? And what we found out was when we put ourselves compared to our peers, we're second lowest in our spending on athletics and activities.
I have a question. So is this just athletics, or is it athletics and activities? And is that true for all of the other schools that are in this list?
Correct. It, it should say, well, how much does this district spend on activities and athletics? So it could be like the, whatever club or, you know, not the football team, there's other activities.
Right, no, I understand that, but is that true for the other state, for the other schools? Okay, so it's not just athletics for the other schools? It's athletics and activities, football?
Yep.
So we're apples to apples?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Right, so we're near the bottom on that. And then think, well, those are city schools primarily, so what does it look like locally? And we're at the bottom when you look at the districts, the four districts that touch us on each side. So I'd say two-hundred-and-one dollars to me seems reasonable. Maybe underspending actually, but, you know, it's what we can afford and what we have right now. On admin, again, somewhere or another area where potentially can take criticism, we're exactly average. The average is three-point-four-seven, and our line says three-point-four-seven. So I think we're right where we want to be on that. On the top of page twenty-five, this one is a new chart that we haven't shown before, but this one shows staffing ratios. So what this is trying to say is, takes the number of students and divides it by the number of licensed teachers you have on staff. Our ratio is one licensed teacher for fourteen-point-six students. And so being at the bottom of this list is better. That means you're staffing better than the people at the top of the list. So I feel good that we're at the bottom of this list.
John, let me go, going back to the administration. Is there a previous definition of administration dollar amount from a previous page that that's tied into?
Like what? Count says administrative spending?
Yeah, because we've got, you know, the one that's in the general fund.
Yep, so it's on, like on page nineteen, in the green.
It is, that's the number used.
And then the next one we added this year, since we were putting a self emphasis on school counselors and social workers, wanting to see how we benchmark on that. And again, we were already near the bottom, which is good, where we want to be. So when the final data is all calculated for twenty-twenty, I would, I don't know if we'll be the bottom because of the fourteen new positions we're adding, but we should definitely stay near the bottom, I'm guessing.
John, so this, this chart reflects what we're currently, what we're currently at?
Yes, so this data is as of last school year. This is the seventeen, eighteen school year, it's the most recent data we can use to benchmark state aid. All right, page twenty-six then, we talked about our debt. And this is big in this year because of the referendum obviously upcoming. So part of the reason why the tax impact will not be as bad is because of the top two lines there, the Longfellow, Mayo, Hawthorne renovations being paid off, and then the Centurion Riverside being paid off. And we've spoken mostly of Centurion Riverside being paid off this year. But we also had those renovations that were done twenty years ago, and those other three buildings that are coming off the books on February first. So when you, when you take those off the books and you potentially issue new debt, the payment isn't going to be as bad. That's what I'm trying to say. And then the next school year, Hawthorne and Mayo fall off the list from those renovations that were done.
And that also affects the property tax amounts then, right? Okay.
And we've kind of, as we've put together like a proposed debt repayment schedule for the new bonds that might be issued, we've taken that into account. So the first year, the payment's kind of like this, then it steps up a little bit more, and then it can step up a little bit more and be flat for a number of years. So on page twenty-seven, this kind of shows what we have for payments. So if we're, I look at it like this way, if you're, if you're thinking about buying a new car and you're used to paying three-hundred dollars a month, so equate that to the fourteen-point-four million dollars, that's kind of what we're saying. That's the base, that's what we're used to paying in debt. If we keep paying that amount into the future, that's kind of shows you the gap as it widens. That means we can afford more debt, but keep our payment flat. And then the graph at the bottom of page twenty-seven shows that we are the lowest of our peer group on debt spending on a per student basis. So that's a good point as well. All right, page twenty-eight. We've shown this graph before, although last year it was going the other way. I thought it's easier to read if it goes not vertical, instead of horizontal across the page. But this just shows the local levy amounts approved through the local optional. That's the school board control, the referendum is the voter-controlled amount. You can add those two up together. Each district's guaranteed at least seven-twenty-four, so you can see St. Cloud has the minimum. And then YZ, other voters have approved two-thousand through the voter-approved, and then the local optional four-twenty-four.
Operating.
Correct. So the, the average here is eighteen-thirty-five, we're, you know, just above St. Cloud there. If we were to be at the average, that would provide another seven-point-two million dollars annual funded for us. So that would help make up some of our shortfall from the state, eleven million that we don't have from them.
Could you repeat what you just said?
Yep, so if we were to pass a voter-approved referendum and get the average number, which I calculated is eighteen-thirty-five on this page, that would provide a seven-point-two million dollars additional annual operating funding.
And if I may, John, and it may be premature to ask this, but I don't know whether to use if or when, so I'll use when. When the referendum passes and the new facilities are built, there will probably be need for operating referendum. Would that number or percentage you proposed perhaps be adequate for the operational requirements for those new facilities?
Well, in general, you know, three, four years out, when the new school buildings hopefully are opening, we should have more students, as we showed on the graph. So that in itself will bring more revenue. And so we're hopeful with that new revenue will also be able to cover part of the new staffing. So it's possible we don't need an operating referendum, but it would make things easier if there were an operating referendum at some point in the future. On page twenty-nine, this is just tracking kind of our open enrollment, what happens. So the blue line is residents, so students who live within our district boundaries but choose to go to a different school. There's nineteen-hundred-and-thirty-one of those students. The red line shows students who live outside of our boundaries but ask to come to our schools. And that difference then between those two has been right around fifteen-hundred for the last two school years. So the blue line's been going up, but the red is red, so just, so other students are choosing to come here as well.
And I don't want to, well, so a few years ago, we were doing We Want You Back, that campaign. How successful was that, or were we actually able to get any of those students back? Or is that an effort that perhaps we should maybe take another look at? Or is it something that's ongoing that I'm unaware of?
I would say the sites are doing more specific things. I, I think our graduation rate has increased every year, so, you know, if our rate was going down, then I think we might want to consider bringing that back. But each year, in the last several years, we've gone up all students, and then even a higher percentage when you look within the different various student groups within that overall.
John, were you asking that question in the context of open enrollment? Because it, the, the We Want You Back campaign was to pull students back into the district who simply dropped out, not that they were attending elsewhere.
Well, actually, and so thank you for the clarification. I was focusing more so on the residents enrolling and elsewhere open enrollment. But the We Want You Back was tied to dropouts.
Yeah, kids that weren't going to school anywhere.
Thank you.
All right, then we're into the appendices, so that's kind of the main budget book. And then the rest is kind of supporting data to answer those, but what about questions? So on page thirty-four, in this section, we, we just go through job title by job title. We don't do this one by building. We don't do this one by building, but we're just going to show you how many of each position do we have. So I think this is a perfect point for that administrator question. I figured that one would come up. So as you see, we have five and a half within that eighteen nineteen budget when we started and we're proposing nine. So the assistant director, we have a titling error here that we need to fix in the next version of this, but we have assistant director of special education. We had three and a half of those. We're proposing to go to four. Actually, that point five should be on the next line down, assistant director of student services. So that was a job where there was a one point O. That person came to us, asked to have their FTE reduced. You know, we're asking that person to go back to what they were, if I understand it correct. Okay. And so one point O down to a point five, going back to a one point O. The position is funded mostly through federal funds, but there's two tenths of that position is funded through the general fund. And the other adds were just, and then we swapped out. We've had two principal and special assignment positions come open in the elementary, secondary education department. So rather than refill them through the principal contract, through the POSA, they're going to be called director of elementary and secondary. It's cost neutral. The pay and benefits are roughly almost exactly the same. So it's just a titling change in that. And then we had one other position transferred from off schedule contract into the administrator contract. So you would see that on the off schedule being a minus one, and it's on this page as a plus one. We did add, or we are proposing adding, the middle school assistant principal, one point O. And that's for that middle school right fit program. So that's the real add.
It's an associate, associate principal, not assistant. That's even fewer contract days. Since that program is going to be not in one of our school buildings, we felt they needed an administrator in that building. So that's the associate middle school position that's added with fewer contract days.
I think like showing up as assistants, I think we retitle the one at Fordell to an assistant principal as well. That's a plus one in the.
Yeah.
So long term, plus referendum after a new middle school, you'd see that program move into that new middle school?
Well, there or, you know, there's been conversation about if we move the students out of Fordell, repurposing that building or potentially either a program that currently in our PSC facility, then we could move right fit into that site. But yeah, it's until we can find a permanent home.
So yes, we're pursuing some lease space temporarily for middle school. You know, page thirty-five, maybe if we just look at, and let's see our specific questions. We just look at the each category. So like adult literacy is very.
Let me give a little explanation about the point five that John referenced. Last year, that person was full time. She reached out to us to see if she could go to half time. We weren't real excited about it because she's really good at what she does, but we went along with it. But it turns out that we actually are needing her more than the point five. So we're paying additional time. And she's also going to be heading our social emotional learning for the district. So we needed that position to be back to full time like it was last year.
Great. So on page thirty-five, maybe just take these in sections like adult literacy. There's no change in the proposed FTE there. Elementary education is a plus two point eight. But that's a whole bunch of adds and a few subtractions there. But the net bottom line in our elementary schools are up two point eight. ECFE is flat. Flip the page to the secondary education total, which is a reduction of one point nine. Special areas, at the end of the day, when it's said about one FTE less in this year. Special ed up fifteen point three. And then our support teaching staff, so that's a section that houses social workers, counselors, providing other positions where principals spend their compensatory money on. That's up twenty-five point two.
Just a quick question regarding the five oh four specialists. Notice an increase there. And recently, there was some national coverage regarding how, not this district to my knowledge, but how some districts are, students are taking advantage of the five oh four designation to acquire more time for SAT, SAT testing. Are we experiencing anything like that or this, that's not why there's an increase being proposed here? I'm just curious as to why the increase.
So I would say that we have not heard that a lot in the district, but it is something that comes up. We have a large number of students that are on five oh four plans at the high school. I think more of that has to do with some of the mental health concerns that we're dealing with. We have a lot of students that are battling eating disorders at the elementary. It's more in that area of ADHD. So all the way around, our number has increased. I mean, I don't think people realize we have over six hundred five oh four plans right now in the district. We have one for neighbor that we're doing the whole district with all of those kids in terms of evaluating, writing some of the plans. So we knew that this was an area that we would need to increase. But it's continuing to go up in the area of five oh four. It's really, it's kind of becoming similar to special ed. When there's a concern or an issue, it is a way that students can get adaptations and modifications. So we're just seeing many, many more requests for five oh four evaluations. And I see that trend continuing.
So some of the mental health, the newly created positions will potentially.
Yes.
Thank you.
But some of those students, I mean, even though they would have the services of new mental health specialists, would very possibly still be on a five oh four plan?
They might. You know, I think that our hope is with some of the new social emotional learning and mental health positions that we have in place, that that preventative place will be effective earlier so that some of these students may not need those modifications. Even if they have a disability, they may be doing fine in their educational environment. So yes, just like special ed, you know, you always have students that are going to meet that qualification no matter what, but the earlier we can get in and the more preventative services we can provide. That hope is that that number will go down or at least won't continue to go up significantly.
John, I can tell you from my own experience, our oldest and our third son were both on five oh four plans for ADD. They were diagnosed really early in elementary school and they did have modifications for extra time on tests if they needed for the, well, for the ACT and so on. Most of the time, they didn't use it, but that accommodation was there if they needed it, which meant their anxiety level was a whole lot less rather than, I'm not going to have enough time to finish. So I think it's helpful just to have something in place even if the student isn't actively using it every single day.
I think too that just because somebody comes in and says, I want this in a five oh four plan, it's really working as a team. Is that a reasonable combination for whatever reason?
I mean, we had, I mean, we had a position letter and everything else to back it up rather than, oh, my kid's a junior. Wouldn't it be nice if he could get some extra time to take his ACT and SAT test, I think. An accommodation that way would be unusual.
Well, another thing is I don't think people realize that ACT and SAT, they have their own definition of what qualifies for accommodations. So even if a student's on a five oh four plan, that does not mean that they're accepted. So I think that there's been a lot of publicity about that. They decided yes.
So one question I asked that was really helpful on the, we'll get there to the off schedule, was which of those positions had student contact versus teacher help? Can we do the same thing with the support list?
Sure.
Maybe not like right here, but like at some point. That would just, that would, yes, that would just help. I like category.
Kathy, what is it that you're asking?
So like which one of these positions have student contact versus like teacher, work with teachers versus admin?
Got it, okay.
Okay, we can work on that and provide you a list. So all total, forty point four teacher increases. Forty point four positions. That might end up being fifty-five or sixty bodies. I'm not sure exactly how it all goes along, but. All right, then on to page thirty-eight, we talked about our paraprofessionals. Category of elementary ed, mine is almost six. Secondary ed plus two point six. Special ed plus ten point eight and support plus three. So all total will be up about ten and a half for parapositions. And I would say almost all of those, Kathy, are student contact, not less.
And I also saw in the staffing document that principals could make choices switching off a teacher position for a paraposition. So there's a lot of customization of how paras get used in the building.
Correct. I would say most of the like elementary and secondary ed are driven completely by principal decision to give them a formula. So there's, and since our students are about the same and going up a little bit in elementary ed, we would have provided a little bit more. So if it's going down, it's because they've chosen to spend maybe their compensatory or their title differently in the next year. On page forty, these are now kind of mostly support positions where there's not a lot of student contact other than, you know, I suppose our office managers or receptionists, they might be greeting students and such in the office. But the first page there is clerical staff, really not much of a change there. Into the page forty-one, then we talk about our maintenance. So other than job title changes, we're still going to have the same number of maintenance workers. Our non-schedule group, very little change there, but an extra mental health practitioner. And then the minority liaison again is all funded from like compensatory or whatever. So that's all a principal choice there. Then we get into off schedule. Off schedule is kind of that group that's non-unionized and it's a group of employees that provide many different unique support roles within the district. Some of them have student contact, but a lot of them do not. And so that category is going up about six positions. Half of that is the student resiliency. Those are student contact positions. And some of these are just title changes too, or you'll see maybe a minus one somewhere, but a plus one on a different line. The coordinator of family engagement and community partnerships on page forty-two, you'll see a minus one there. That's the plus one on the administrator's page. There are one of the plus ones there. Okay?
John, are these, do these include any open positions?
I'd say at any given time, we have.
Carla's answering, giving me a yes. That's what I kind of figured.
Multiple open positions in any of these pages.
Got it. So we've budgeted for this, but we may not fill them for black applicants. Got it. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Then I will jump ahead to page forty-six. This just gives you benefit, takes all these different categories, principals, teachers. Each column is kind of like a contractor, a union group, let's say. And it just shows then how they fall in each building. So it doesn't go job title by job title, but it just kind of shows you how many principals do you have at Amber compared to how many principals do you have at Washington? And you can kind of eyeball that and look at it. That might not mean much just by itself, other than maybe if you're trying to compare like John Marshall to Mayo, they're staffed at about the same, which makes sense because they have about the same number of students. But maybe what provides more context is page forty-eight when it compares proposed by the nineteen twenty to the eighteen nineteen budget, and you can kind of see the difference by building. So Vander Valley, for example, in page forty-eight, if you go all the way to the right column, it says they're going to be up four point five FTE at their building.
And not a criticism more, just a observation. For me, I wondered the correlation between staffing across the board and then student population within the building. So that potentially would have given me a better capacity to relay the why, you know, behind, be it principals, be it teachers, be it you name category, just being able to quickly glance at that. Not a criticism, just a.
My building enrollment. Right, so we could have a building enrollment as an additional column. Thank you for that suggestion. It will make it even smaller to reach here if we have one more column. We also could think through, do we need every column here? Like, do we need the superintendent? There's one, we know where he's at. So, and the school board, we know where you're at. So maybe we could save some space. All right.
I think if there are zeros, maybe we don't really.
We're just a bunch of zeros.
Just a bunch of zeros.
We are too.
All right. So before your study later, when you get your management. Then if we walk through section fifty, the next several sections are just right out of the accounting finance software. It was just a way to kind of prove out, all the numbers are loaded in the finance system the way we summarized in my previous pages. It gives a little bit more detail. In this first section, not as much, you know, as appendix three. Appendix three, not as much detail, but then it gets a little bit more detailed as we go. So I don't know if there are specific questions you want to hone in on any certain page. Otherwise, we don't want to sit here and just read the numbers to you.
But you like numbers, don't you?
I do like numbers. So basically each, in appendix three here, it's just one fund per page. So one is the general fund, two is the food service. Just around at the top of the page there, the construction.
So John, on the revenue, where it says state aides received for a minute?
A mini?
Minute? What's the mini? Okay.
Okay, so the way they have us track the revenue, most of like the general education aid formulas are in the two dash dash, the state revenues. And then the three dash dash are also state revenues, but it's like the special ed aid, but not compensatory aid's not in there, but that's in the twos. But you know, they just break out some of the aides between two hundred level and three hundred level.
Okay. So it's an accounting thing?
That's the decision. They tell us how to do that. Same with federally, that's four hundreds and five hundreds, but they're both federal aids.
Earlier, you'd mentioned there's some additional revenues that you weren't anticipating.
Yes.
Is this where you'd want to talk about?
Sure, let's do that on page fifty. So in the three hundred, the state aides received from mini, there should be some additional special ed aid there. We don't have a final run on what that is. We think that will be approximately five hundred and seventy-five thousand more than what we're planning in that category.
So are you saying five hundred and seventy-five more than the number we see there?
Yes, so instead of thirty-two million three seventy-eight, it's probably going to be thirty-two million seven hundred in total revenues in that category. And we believe we will have a very good chance at a grant for PTEC schools. That's nowhere in here. I'm assuming that would be in the three hundred level. So in that same line item, there could be more money there.
Not a lot coming to the district.
Not if you can reach for CTEC, right?
No, not CTEC.
It's more whatever, help cover tuition costs for students like year five and six, seven to six year PTEC program. Probably the only funny rule to get out of it is that.
Probably the only funding we'll get out of it is that it's required to have a P-Tech coordinator at, at the site, so that, we'll get money to pay for that position, I don't anticipate much more beyond that.
There will be, um, potentially, if the state ends their, I mean, they close their books if they had, I want to say it was like thirty-four million dollars surplus or more, that money will be split up and used as safe schools aid, and so that would also be in fund one, in that three hundred line, I think. Um, and we don't have any assumption for that in our revenue either, so. There's at least three categories I can think of that were in the funding law that we didn't cover.
And if we receive more aid for safe schools, is there, is that additional expenditures that we hadn't even planned for? Or is there a shift that happens in the budget?
No, um, you know, one of the things, we didn't really talk about in here because it was an enhancement we included in last year's budget book, but it would probably be dedicated towards the police liaison officers, the fifth one. We have four right now, so we would probably apply it to the fifth.
We had planned for it, but we didn't put it in the budget.
Correct, we made the.
So then, when we hear that we're getting money from the state for safe schools, but we're also asking for money from a referendum, just say schools are not talking about it going to the same place, or we don't really, I don't want people to think we don't really need it anymore because now we're getting it from the.
Correct, correct, yeah, so you've got to remember when you split thirty-four million dollars, if that's what the number is, divided by eight hundred thousand students, and we get, you know, eighteen, nineteen thousand of that, whatever that formula is, it's going to be, you know, this much compared to what we're asking for in the referendum, so.
So you're saying that what we're getting from the state service is a drop in the budget?
Correct.
Another way to work out is the additional state money would be operational where the referendum is capital.
That's the way I would look at it in my mind, that we would use it for those kind of ongoing pay for our security pairs, paying for the police liaison officers. That would be a better use in my mind for those dollars than what we're asking for in the referendum.
I think that's a really good way to explain it, people versus hardware.
Yep.
And then, one more question is, maybe I missed it, but we generally have a bill from our charter school friends for specialized. Is that in our budget somewhere?
Correct, so, once, once we figured out what that was, that's pretty much already assumed in here, and we kind of made that adjustment within our special ed aid, so that's not a surprise to us now like it was the first time it happened. That is another category of potential, um, additional, um, that will help us, is I believe there was, um, some aid in there to help districts like us not get charged almost a hundred percent of that cost, there's like, they're going to put ten percent of it, um, you know, pay an aid to cover about ten percent of that, so it lessens the burden on the rest of the district.
And there was an increase on that reach here, wasn't there?
Yes, I think it went up in the second year, maybe in the third and fourth years.
So, so a quick discussion, our point is, do people think that'd be helpful to spell that out in the beginning? You know, where you got great summaries up front, you know, the general public doesn't understand what we just talked about. And spelling that out could be helpful, you know, when, when we talk specialized shortcomings, it's not just us that we're paying for here.
Correct, correct, we are covering, um, students who within their boundaries can go to a district like a charter school or any public.
I think that'd be good to spell it to the public a little bit more clear.
Yeah. I feel like I wrote that, I don't know if I wrote that in here, if I wrote that in the board doc summary, or I feel like I tried to describe that somewhere, but.
But it didn't sit up front of the document, that'd be a good location for it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put it on the front cover or anything, but I.
Maybe like, like a fact type of discussion.
I'll have a look. All right, then let's go to appendix four, page sixty-six. This then is summarizing it by program, and so, just how you read this is like the first line on page sixty-six of Board of Education. So our budget for the school board is a hundred and seventy-three thousand four eighty-one. Second page, salaries, benefits, travel, membership dues, things like that, so that's the entire budget of those, of the school board. And then you can just read all the way down, each program by program. And so, this is where we get the information on that, for that one chart on page nineteen, but we, we condensed some of these, like we put payroll and HR together, for example. So program one oh four and one oh five, just to make page nineteen look a little easier to read, so, that's kind of, this is the source of that data. And like our special ed programs are any program that starts with a four, so four hundred all the way down to four two two are special ed. It's just, this is the level of, you know, another level of detail that MBE requires to report in how we code all of our kind of actions to them.
I thought you just started moving along where it's impressively low, considering the amount of snow we had.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand was our budget last year, we're projecting a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred. So since our staff are probably already covered under operations and maintenance, and then just drive the, uh, it's probably just the additional overtime, the salt and sand that we buy, um, maybe some gas for vehicles and stuff. So, and then that just works its way all the way up to page, so through eighty-one. And eighty-four kind of makes it, um, this kind of helps answer Kathy's question from a few minutes ago about the difference, um, you know, revenues that are in the two hundred group versus the three hundred group, so you can see, um, page eighty-four, that line two oh one is in doubt in aid. So that's the money that the state, the state land trust, it generates interest and income, and they proportionally pay that to all the districts, so our share of that is six hundred ninety-one thousand. The biggest line item in there is two eleven, general education aid. And then like in the three hundreds, you've got special ed at three sixty. And then on the expenditure side, it kind of just goes, um, superintendent cabinet are one ten, school board on twelve, off schedule, administrators are one fourteen, so on and so forth, it kind of just gives a little bit more insight on where the money is going. As you can see, there's many, many lines, we gave you every line in the budget, I think I wrote it in here, it'd be twenty-one thousand lines of data, so we're trying three different ways of showing it to you in a more understandable sense. Someone argued that even this is probably too far in the weeds for at, at the governance level, but, um, it's, I think it's been some important data for everything else. All right, and then that brings us up to the sixth appendix, which is page one oh six. So on one oh six, we read across, we just did general fund for example, fund one, very first line. So at the end of last school year, we had twenty-six million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars left over in the fund balance. So those are all funds, whether they're unassigned or restricted for something like staff development or so on and so forth. You add in the next column of revenues for eighteen nineteen, that's two hundred and thirty-four million, you subtract out the expenditures. So if we spent everything that we've allocated of the new money, plus any rollovers from that twenty-six million, we would end this year at twenty-one million five seventy-four. We're projecting a two hundred and thirty-two million dollars of revenue next year, two hundred and thirty-two million dollars of expense. We'd have twenty-one point six million dollars left over. If you then drop down into that blue and purple section, it just shows you how the twenty-one point six million dollars, there'd be four hundred thousand dollars left over for the ALC, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand for our, um, third-party billing fund, two million dollars left over in our long-term facility maintenance fund, three hundred ninety-six thousand in operating capital. But the bottom line, the one that I'm most concerned about, to make sure we comply with school board policy, is the unassigned. So seventeen and a half million roughly is what we have left over, um, that's our emergency fund, seven point five percent.
Was that the nineteen days?
Yes, that's correct, that's our nineteen days of emergency fund there.
How do you go about that level?
Um, you know, the finance director, I'd like to see it more, um, but as the superintendent reminds me, we're, we're, we're not a bank, we're here to make sure that we're spending as much as we possibly can on getting that job done. We have a little cushion, a little reserve for emergency, but, um, the, our, most of our dollars need to go to education.
Emergency or just unexpected changes?
Or a one-time investment in something, if we wanted to pull some money out, um, or something.
Like you hear that paper costs may be going up.
Sure. Sure, sure.
So if there's something that we couldn't possibly see, energy costs, or if there's a good possibility coming.
Correct.
I, I, I think emergencies is a little nuanced. Or like, when the state could be paying us.
Correct, you're correct, if we had been shut down, we would have been drawing down from our reserves, our money.
Well, well, that even, I think first years I was here, they had the ninety ten, we were getting ninety percent.
Oh, that was awful.
Well, then they shifted it down to like seventy thirty.
Seventy thirty, yeah.
So, well, a lot of districts were borrowing money, we had enough reserve that we could maintain until they paid us back.
Yep.
Right.
So we shouldn't see six percent as excess, we should see it as tiny.
No, if you ask your auditors, they're going to come in and tell you probably a number of at least eight percent, because that would reflect about a month, upwards to twenty-five percent, which would be about three months worth of reserves, so. So a number in between eight and twenty-five would probably be more of a recommendation, but, you know, you have to kind of look at it as how stable is your money coming in? And the state, unless they shut down, they always pay us on the fifteen and the thirty, it's just like getting a paycheck, fifteen and thirty, the money always comes, so, um, you know, we're, it's pretty reliable that our money is going to be there when we need it, so we make sure that it's always in the right account and it's payday for our employees and all of our employees. All right, and then appendix seven, we gave a little bit of commentary in there about the five-year forecast, so what the real numbers are on page one oh eight. Things go as planned, we're good through the twenty-one school year, so not the coming one, but the year after the coming one, we would be okay, barring anything unforeseen. It's in that third year out, that twenty-one dash twenty-two school year where there's potentially a one percent reduction needed. Uh, but as I think I explained to somebody today, maybe Melissa in one of your questions, you know, if we do our, a good job of budgeting next year, maybe we end up with a little bit of a positive balance this year because we've had vacant positions and so forth, I don't see twenty-two being necessarily a problem, and that's maybe another year out from there, like for twenty-three, so.
It looks a little scary.
Yeah, that's, that's common when you look at these, every time I've run it, and you're always looking at that fifth year, it feels like, god, we're going to be shutting our doors, it's just so bad. And then, you know, things happen, some unexpected revenue, um, gets signed into law, and we've been able, and superintendent does a good job of reducing or reallocating as necessary, keep it at three levels, so.
Ben, we have a, a document I remember seeing somewhere that talks about the number of years out of the last, however number of years that we've done reductions.
Correct, we've actually had that in the book, and then we took it out this year, because it's just an ongoing thing. Every year, we sit down as a cabinet.
Yeah.
And we make reductions in different cabinet departments and across the district.
I think that's really important for the public to know, do you, do you happen to know that number?
If I look to the last budget book. One of these pages.
Yeah, I, I think that's where they get information as well.
You know, the last really big one was in that nine-ten school year, where it was nine point one million, then four point five million right after that. Every year since then, it's just been kind of around a million dollars, half a million here, you know, those kinds of ones that are more manageable.
But I think, I think that really is important for the public to see, I mean, it's not a giant number, but I think it, it really shows that we continue to be fiscally responsible, and it's not like, well, we had, we're getting this huge pot of money from our, our, our operating referendum that we passed several years ago, but we're continuing to make efficiencies, I like that word a little bit better, efficiencies as we can, and I, you know, even though, in the context of the entire budget, it's not a whole lot of money, but I think the detail for the public is important to, to see.
Especially as certain legislatures like to talk of, uh, the start levels of education funding, the reality is, I think, a little bit different.
Yeah, I guess I would, in lieu of that, that's why this year I put in that one graph and tried to just explain verbally, our budget would be eleven million dollars higher had the state just matched inflation. That's, think of that as the amount of money that, or the amount of spending that's not there right now, eleven million dollars of positions have been reduced because of that.
Well, and if we're not thinking of putting it in the budget book, then perhaps think about having it available in the referendum conversation, because I know, it is for buildings and capital, but the crossover conversation always happens, like with administration and, and our overall district fiscal responsibility, and that's an easy way to sort of demonstrate it with that.
Is the district spending, I'm wondering, was that the first question?
Right. Right.
So, John, it sounds like, even though the graph you included was designed to address that, it, it sounds like there's interest in maybe having it presented.
Okay, okay, thank you. I wrote that on sticky paper. Um, and then the graphs on page one oh nine, I knew this year, that came right out of the forecast on my software as well, just to try to, if you're more visual, you're looking at revenues versus expenses, that's that top left quadrant, the revenues kind of just pick up a little bit faster than the expenses, that's because generally, we assume our costs are going up three percent, and our money coming in is two percent, so we're fighting that one percent gap over and over and over. So then the top right kind of just shows, you know, we're starting this budget with a twenty-six thousand dollar surplus on two hundred and thirty-two million, um, but that would grow to about a two million dollar deficit next year, but that would change to a two million dollar deficit again. Expenses maybe going up about three percent, but aid's going up only two percent. And then the unassigned fund balance, just showing how that would, if our reserve is seventeen point six million, how it would basically be exhausted by FY twenty-four, if we can adjust the budget or cut anything that's in the budget right now for the next five years. And then, um, the year end, the total fund balance, so that's restricted money as well.
And just to clarify, the twenty nineteen twenty school year is FY twenty?
FY twenty, is the nineteen dash twenty school year.
Okay. I always have to get reminded of that.
I think I'd be able to keep track of that.
Yes, that's, the second number, your year that your school year ends in, the June that you end in is your fiscal year number.
And also, going back to that five-year general fund forecast, remind me, which fiscal year is the one we would anticipate opening the new schools in?
That would be fall of twenty-two is what we're saying, the new school, so that'd be the school year of twenty-three.
Okay.
And we, that's a good point, we have not worked in there that, oh, we're going to have new middle schools, so we might have new middle school principal, and new light bill pay, or those types of things, so those need to be worked in in a future set of assumptions.
What year did you say that would be, John?
That was FY twenty-three.
So, just to clarify, that I heard it right, new costs if the, if the house are not.
That's correct, we're not working those in at this point yet.
Because we're not, also not including the increase in enrollment, which would increase our state aid as well.
So on that note, if things pass this fall, then when we're sitting here this time next year, would you have those?
I think that that would be a logical time, we need to start working those in the plans, we have some time to adapt to what do we need to do to manage opening new buildings to overhead and new costs. I think in our next run of the forecast, we're going to try to take the standardized staffing document that I shared with you and try to be a little bit more precise in predicting the number of staff we're going to have in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, as best we can. That's the end of my presentation. Any discussions or, uh, any gaining questions?
Did we want to take a break before we get to the questions, or are you guys as rare to get to the questions? Keep going. Who wants to start?
Ask my long way.
I have a question about, um, you answered so many of them during the presentation, so I'm trying to narrow in. The difference between the school counselors and the social workers? So I know that you said in the answers to the question, there were licensure differences, but at the secondary level, I don't know if people necessarily think of the high school counselors as sort of first line for mental health. So we are talking about the high school counselors as well as the elementary, right? That's the same category?
I think that was one of the reasons why we added the residency specialists at the high school, um, because our counselors often at that level are working more with transcripts and qualifications and testing. But I will say that, um, we've had a number of conversations with our high school counselors as well as our high school principals about whether trying to shift some of those responsibilities that potentially someone else could do, um, that doesn't have that specialized degree in counseling so that they can spend more of their time working with students. So that'll take a little while to shift, but we, we recognize that we need to make that move so our high school students have that same support from the counselors as our elementary.
Great. And as a, as a former school counselor, you have a master's in school counseling, but that doesn't, you aren't trained to really deal with severe mental health issues that are done by social workers and therapists. It's, you just don't have that type of training.
Right. And I know that when we talked about how people were going to find out about this, you, you answered the question about how students were going to find out, but I know coming from a family perspective, there are sometimes things parents see in their students that may not be seen by friends or staff. So I look forward to how you're going to reach out to families to let them know how to contact, what is their first point of contact if they need to contact somebody at their child's school with a concern they have about mental health?
I guess I would suggest they follow the normal, um, whatever we called that. If it's a building issue.
No, I'm talking about if they think their child has a mental health issue and they want to.
That's what I'm responding to.
Still?
Okay. I call the building principal, say, my child has blah, blah, blah. Who should they, who do you want to connect them with?
I think that's probably easier to remember than a parent, well, if it's this, I contact this person. If my child isn't exhibiting this, it's somebody else, but sort it out.
Yeah, so either mental health or academic issue, they always, well, let's just specifically to that, you know, like math classroom, whatever, but always contact the building principal and they can connect them with the right resources, the thing to connect them to.
And I, I will say that with this addition, especially at the elementary level, I know that our elementary building principals are going to do a lot of communication with parents because it's a new resource at that level. So, um, there will be communication and I appreciate the question because I think it's something that we always can look at and try to improve that knowledge of what's at the site. I mean, I think it surprised all of us when we talked to the students and at the high school that they're like, we don't have social workers at our school. Kind of, you know, yes, you do. So we know that that's an area that we just need to continue to look at for both our students and our parents.
Is it perhaps not a valid idea to, uh, as we make preparation for the, um, handbook, student handbook for next year, and maybe include a section in there referencing the increased supports that are being provided to our students and encourage our parents? And that's where we could reference the chain of command and the following. Kathy, were there additional questions you wanted?
Um, well, I just had some questions about how, so what, we know how much this is going to cost and, and what some of the shifts were, but I just wanted to clarify what some of the impacts look like. So I read in the staffing guide and in the answers to the questions that the principals had requested the reduction of the library media specialists and to once a cycle. So it was, was it once a cycle before for all the sites?
It was, but there was also quite a bit of time built in for planning and collection maintenance.
Maintenance and collection. Okay, so then where does, where do those roles go now?
They stay with that position, but the, the, um, principals would say that there wasn't that much time needed for those activities.
Okay.
And there's a paraprofessional in there in the library all the time. So it's not like there will be less time that kids can come and check out books and stuff because there's always a pair right in there minus a thirty-minute lunch per day.
So there'll be a library, so there will be a library media specialist in every building once a cycle, but they, some of them were there for longer than that before.
They would, correct. They'll be there more than once a cycle because it will take more, in most buildings, it takes more than one day to teach each classroom.
Okay.
There would just be less time where they're not seeing kids.
Okay.
Kind of compare it to a PE teacher and a music teacher. They all teach the kids two lessons per six-day cycle and the media was just one per cycle.
Okay.
So, I mean.
And art is one thing?
Art is one, but it's forty-five minutes, so it's longer.
So it's kind of equivalent to the art staff.
And that leads right into the other question because I saw that we reduce some FTEs for art at Kellogg and music at Willow. So they're not getting any less art or music than they did before. We're just able to.
Some numbers thing at enrollment?
Okay, okay. So they can do this, they can reach all the students, but with less FTEs?
We tried something a little bit different this year where we gave them the guidance of take your number of students, divide by this number that we're giving you, and then you distribute it between art and math. And if you want to go a little bit more on math and have a little bit less art, that's, you figure out how to make all the schedule work and do it that way.
Okay.
So we gave maximum flexibility this year on staff.
That sounds dangerous.
Oh, sorry.
Um, two things. First of all, the discussion about ensuring that parents know where they can get help, um, mental health support for their child. I think that's really important. We have that information up there and proof from students too that they really want to know, especially secondary kids. And so I'm hoping that buildings will do a really good job of, of learning their students. This is where you can go if you have questions, if you need help, if you're feeling stressed. Then I have another question that I'm not sure is exactly a budget question, but from the May twenty-second handout, special session, E twelve budget agreement. Um, says civics requirement encourages school districts to offer civics course for credit to eleventh and twelfth grade. We already have that covered with our world history, American history, US government.
That's a great discussion. I'd rather advance to the like.
But I think the word was recommend.
Yeah, I don't think it's, yeah, it's not, I think it started out as required and then now it's just, it got changed to recommended.
But it just seems, I'm not sure exactly what civics is. I think that's sort of open to interpretation, but I'm just wondering if that's something this district is considering or if we're good with what we're offering.
I thought we had a sort of a discussion about this a while ago, maybe during, yeah, that would have been my, um, of how, of how we're, we, we have those components of civics that are weaved into the curriculum already throughout.
Different areas, yeah.
Rather than, okay, now we're going to learn civics, kids, and.
I think there was some discussion that, that some legislators wanted a specific class just for that. And then I think it, through the process, it got to recommended that you do this.
And at this time, nothing's being brought forward to do that.
Wasn't there a discussion about curbside?
That didn't make it in.
Yeah, that didn't.
The document?
No.
No.
So there's one other thing in the staffing, um, document. And I just want to know if there was any examples of this this year where the cabinet can make an extra allocation if, I'm going to read it to you. It's just.
It's in the staffing?
It's in the staffing document, yeah. Um, the cabinet may in certain situations make it, make an extra allocation from the general fund to address a situation that appears inequitable. Anything happen with that issue?
I remember we had a couple, like, let's, I'm just going to make up a number. It's not the exact number, but let's say their total FTEs had to be fifty-two point two. And we got it fifty-two point two-three, close enough, we'll take that. I mean, you know, we didn't say, no, you got to get that down to point two even. We did a few, um, I remember one for sure, but I think there was another that it was within a tenth or so of what their allocation was. And I just said, that's, we're good. That's good now.
So I gave you your wiggle broom.
Yes, same. Generally, very little of that.
I, I'm thinking of two, yeah. One was, one, I won't identify the school, but there were two schools that I remember specifically where they were very, very, very close. And I just said, that's, we're good. That's close enough.
But for the most part, like you said, you stick.
No, because the first year we, we, um, tried this document, a little bit of that happened. And then, then you come into, wow, Principal B told me they got this, so we made it, we were upfront that this is, we're not going to stray from this. This is what it is. And, um, it went much smoother.
Those were a lot of the things that were reduced, helped balance out the counselors and stuff, those kind of little extras that maybe have been allocated through that discretion.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more question. I thought, um, we were talking about capacity, um, space constraints as we grow before we have new buildings. We can't predict what exactly we would do, but I assume everything that we would do between now and then, we just have to do within the constraints of this budget. And it's mostly going to be about shifting people around as opposed to, unless it's a class size issue. Right.
Yeah, it's not a good situation, but I mean, that's, that's public education. You, anytime you want to do something different or new, you have to take that money from somewhere else to do that. When we, you know, two percent comes in and three percent going out. Unfortunately, we're forced in that type of situation every year. Unless we have that eleven million dollars that John was talking about, then we wouldn't have that problem.
So is this, would you consider this to be a public document?
This, oh.
This budget allocations file?
Once it's approved, once it's approved.
Oh, wait, this one?
The twenty nineteen, twenty budget allocation.
This is an internal staff document that we should report.
Technically, now you all have it. Somebody could request it, yes. But it wasn't intended to be a public document.
Well, because it's not easily understandable. It's not translated. Not that it's trying to be.
Right.
I mean, it just isn't easily backtested.
It probably doesn't hurt just because it actually does lay out pretty specifically how each school gets what they have now. And that's something we were lacking up until last school years, pretty formal process or document.
Well, I mean, I think even just as a reference point, I mean, I'm not suggesting that you send it out to all staff, but when you have, I mean, we know nobody ever complains, but if somebody should complain and say, well, you know, that building got this and we only got this. This would be a great document to say, well, it's based on this and this and this and this, and it's right there. So I would see this as more of a, a document when, you know, people really have a lot of questions about how and why.
Yeah. Unfortunately, what it doesn't factor in is a building's title and compensatory. I mean, I won't identify the building. Let's say hypothetically, an elementary building may have a million dollars to choose to spend how they would like to. That wouldn't show up in here. When I, where they start comparing school to school, your school may only have five hundred thousand of compensatory and the other school has a million dollars.
Is that, we don't, that's not really reflected in, I mean, it's in the final numbers, but it's not really broken out. Is that important to know?
That's a, that's a public document that you can get right off M D V's website, you know, funding report section because it shows school by school how much each building generates in compensatory money.
So is that included in the budget?
So it's built into the all budget numbers, the principal revenue and the spending choices that the principal has made.
Were there other board questions from board members? Don't want to, I'm sorry.
I have a process question. Um, so I loved getting the budget book early through, um, and it was, it was a lot to go through. And then some of the board members made a list of questions and sent them in. And I was actually really surprised to get all those questions returned to us before the meeting. Of course, I didn't have time to read through them, but it looked like it took a lot of work to prepare that document.
Yes, it did.
The standing of the reason that we were providing the questions was so that there wouldn't be any surprise questions and that, that if we asked those questions verbally, it would be ready to be answered. So I, I guess the process question is, do you want board members to say, these are questions I'm planning to ask? Because for transparency reasons, it would be nice to have those answers available to the public, not just to the individuals who ask the questions. Because I figure for some of them, if I have a question, other people will have the same question when going through the book. So are, are we as board members supposed to distinguish between please provide these ahead of time or at the meeting, or is that up to you guys to decide how you like to best answer questions?
I think it's just decide how much time you want to spend here. I mean, um, I don't know how many hours John spent over the weekend, but we spent four hours of today's cabinet meeting responding to all the questions. So if you waited and asked all of those questions here, you can tack on, I mean, because literally, John, we'd have to go into the, on his computer and.
Right.
Figure all that out, so.
So which is better, you having to spend your time at a cabinet meeting or us spending the time?
Well, I guess for me, it's a question of, two questions. One, of all the questions we receive, how much of it does the general public need to know versus, and then how much really is the board needs to know for their governance role? And whatever you think the community needs to know, then those questions should, probably should be asked at the meeting because that's the only way they're going to hear the answers. But, you know, I guess some of the questions were pretty deep down into the prop, into the budget. Is that a level that the community needs to understand? I guess it's the question we'd have to ask, but.
Melissa, were you asking that specifically about the budget or just in general question?
How, how the.
I mean, I think, I mean.
The classes were providing questions. Because I, I saw what was returned to us and I recognized that that was a lot of work.
This was a lot of work, but I think for the normal board docs kinds of things that we get, I'll use, I'll use John as an example because you're, it's so easy. Where I have a question about a number or am I doing the math right or something that's, he's probably going to know off the top of his head, but he might actually have to dig a little bit. That, and then I would say, I may ask this at the board table as well, simply to inform the public. And you've heard me say, just to reiterate, to inform the public, you know, those, those kinds of questions. What I don't ever want to do or really avoid is to, um, we'll use you again, is to put you on the spot where it is something that's maybe off over here, maybe a little bit into the weeds where you have to sit at your computer and find it or go, well, I'll get back to you. Because I think that doesn't make anybody look like they know, you know, he knows what he's doing, but he's just not prepared for that particular question. But then we also have, may have questions that come into our brains while we're going through. And I think what I try to do is say, well, I have this question and you may not know it off the top of your head, just to give some flexibility in terms of, you know, his having all that information at the ready or not.
I, I still don't think I have a easy answer to my questions. So if I, if I'm looking at the materials before a board meeting and I have a list of questions that I would normally ask, if I send them all in at that time, then are you guys going to spend a whole lot of time trying to prepare them ahead of time? Or is that going to be at your discretion? Or should I separate my questions by things I'd like to know earlier, things I'd like to know later?
Well, I, I can speak, when I was a cabinet member in my previous district, the board didn't do that. So literally you went to board meetings with multiple three-ring binders that had everything there. So if you got asked a question, you could find the answer. there, so if you got asked a question, you could find the answer. It'd been much easier had they submitted the questions in advance, so you'd at least had the answers versus...
You lost the questions in advance.
Can you wait 10 minutes, I'll find that answer for you? I mean, it's better, you know, it just, I think it's better for a smoother meeting. It's less, I think it'd be less stressful, spend four hours in a cabinet meeting trying to find it versus live at a board meeting and trying to get all that information.
That answers my question, because I was feeling, you know, sorry for your...
Well, and I'll be honest, there's going to be some times where we're just not going to be able to have it ready, and we're going to have to just say, "Well, I'll get back to you," because it's just...
Melissa, to reiterate, you know, Julius points is, when, when you get the answer back, if you feel this is good for the public information, re-ask it.
Right.
At the board meeting.
Because, you know, we have the answer.
So, I think, I mean, another thing, if we really, I mean, this is kind of going from the budget, but I suppose it sort of isn't, is if, if we're getting, if we're seeing an agenda item for the first time on Thursday that we might have questions for, we're reading it over the weekend, and then even if we get questions into you by Monday, that's not a whole lot of time. But if we know that something is going to be coming up, not at the Tuesday meeting after the Thursday, but two weeks later, then that gives us a little bit, everybody a little bit more time to figure what questions and answers.
So, Melissa, do you feel you've gotten an answer for your question? Were there any other questions of the board members? Okay, so Superintendent Munoz, just to be clear, you've provided the board an opportunity to review the budget. We've offered a number of questions that, some prior to, that you've already responded back to. What is your hope or expectation about us? I mean, I don't think we could necessarily commit and say, "Well, at our next board meeting, when this is presented, we won't have any new questions." But what, what's your, your hope for expectation out of us in terms of a result of this meeting today? Well, normally, this meeting's really get a lot of the detail out of the way. When John presents this June 4th, it's just high-level summary of the budget, then the next June meeting, you approve the budget, because it has to be approved by June 30th. So, this is really the meeting to dig deep into what you need to know.
But you're not prohibited from asking a question.
Right, right.
But I'll probably be spending five minutes instead of two hours of the next one.
Yeah. And I ask that more so for our new board members, just to give you opportunity and awareness, not to try to blindside you or rush you along come Tuesday, but just so that you'd know.
I don't, I don't think my other questions are about what's in the budget or would be in the, make it take longer for us to approve it, but there are a lot of great things that we talk about in the budget about the programs that we're going to have, and maybe at our next retreat as a board, I'd like to talk about how we can get information about those out to the public as the year goes on, like the Right Fit program and the Incubator EDU and the Tech Novators. Like, it's great to see it in the budget and find out how much we're spending on it, but maybe as part of our board calendar, we can look at some of the things that we should highlight and just have a board agenda item on. Now that we're, now that we agreed to spend the money, how's it going?
A lot of value in hearing, "How did the middle school Right Fit program impact operations?"
And some of what we've been doing, I've been talking about Incubator EDU on the radio for the last three months, and at, what's that group, Ready Board, actually next month, presented to the Chamber Board, DMCs really helped us promote that as well. Probably talking a little bit about Right Fit, but not, not as much.
And I think with the mental health piece, I don't know if the plan was, your presentation you're doing in June, is that what you're doing at that conference?
Yes, into June.
Yeah, to just get a condenser or some version of that, that would be, that would support our funding decisions with a narrative about what we're doing with them.
So, Kathy, I appreciate you raising that point, which gives me another opportunity to request of board members, would you please send your ideas for future retreats to Wendy so we can get them in queue? Thus far, if I'm mistaken, we haven't received, well, we haven't received too many. I won't say none, but I'll just say not too many. But great ideas, so let's move them forward.
Do you want us to send those to Wendy, to Wendy or to you?
To Wendy.
To Wendy.
She in turn will feed them to Deborah and myself, and we'll look at them.
That way I'll have a handle on what's coming.
Okay, any other concerns, questions? Are we good to go? Meeting adjourned at 7:25. Thank you.